Like, I get legally, but like. Oh, and this other one? Yeah, you should ask your doctor to change because we can't keep it in stock. What can you guarantee you'll keep it in stock? They're like, no. Cue my grumpy face. The number of times in that call I found myself having to say, "Okay, I'm sorry. I know I have my annoyed voice on. It isn't with you."
He's getting fancy.
You don't deserve to hear it. I'm sorry is slipping out.
And they understood.
I can see.
Well, there won't be too much, I said.
Nope.
I have news from the front.
Well, I am a s-
Report, but three of our items will be continued again.
Well, looks like we're ready. Tim is not here. We'll see if Mr. Wilsner is coming or not. And we're on air.
So you didn't get in touch with anyone because it's special permits, so super majorities. Well, he can miss one meeting.
Yeah.
That was Mullins rule.
Yep. Well, let's rock and roll. Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our December ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. We are here in the upstairs meeting room at Town Hall. They are not kidding when they say we have a new sound system that really picks up the sound and carries well. I love those improvements. Again, we are upstairs at Town Hall. If you are watching us on TV or online and you want to participate, you can either log into Zoom and that is, that link is on the agenda posted on the Town website, or you can drive on down and join us. We'll be here till the meeting's done. The meeting is, of course, being recorded, and that is everything, I believe, I am legally required to tell you. So with that, before we get into our next agenda item, if anyone wants to leave us in the pledge again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I, oh, I hope everyone had a, we haven't met since Thanksgiving, have we? Well, I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. If you celebrate Christmas or Hanukkah, or I believe, I'm guessing, I think Kwanzaa's in that same timeframe between now and our next meeting as well. I don't know the dates on it. I hope you have a nice, one of those coming up and a Happy New Year as well because as I believe our plan is to not have our December-
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third meeting. Thank you. Only so smart, and I can be good with that. Great. Before we go further, public comment. Seeing none for general public comment, the public hearings, of course, well, you'll have the opportunity there. And Logan, we don't have anyone in, great. Okay, then we'll go on to Chair and Director's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was gonna cover the Master Plan Public Meeting last week. Did you want to introduce any comments, or shall I just?
Either way, I'm happy with you talking about it.
Roll through it. Yeah, so we had a Master Plan Public Meeting. This is the fifth one and the next to final one to get public input for hopefully a final draft plan for public review. We're waiting for the Master Plan Steering Committee to sort of coalesce, and they'll be important for the final review as well, staff review with the department heads. So I'm really hoping to ramp this up and New Year's, New Year's resolution, get this on the books by February and close it out. That's obviously the will of the Planning Board. So we had this meeting, and it wasn't well attended, but we got some good input out of it, and there's a video. And so out of that, we will have some useful input, and I think the Chair and I discussed a strategy for getting more public input. It's important. Obviously, it's, you know, essential for the validity of the master plan itself. It's all about public input and public engagement. So we had that, and there'll be next steps shortly, and I'll keep you updated, but we are moving towards the finish line. Any questions on that? Comments, questions?
I'll throw in one thing quickly. We do have the, the survey might still be open. I'm not a hundred percent on that, but regardless, we did have, I believe it was a hundred eighty-six respondents, which, if you think of the fact there's twelve thousand people in Lunenburg without further data, you might think that's not many. If you know how many people respond to public surveys, that's a fantastic number. And our survey results, I don't, I don't have the data breakdown on this one, but have traditionally been a really good cross-section of the community, the, the community that's been responding. It hasn't just been one location in town or one particular group responding. I'm assuming that trend held with this. They didn't bring up otherwise. So the survey results have been a great cross-section and also feed this, this process as well.
Okay, thank you. Well said. So I've got just a few other items off of the twenty twenty-five work plan. We'll be gearing up in January to put zoning workshops as a sort of a, a standing item on the agendas. We've got three updates, zoning updates that we know about, obviously the MBTA one that we're shooting for Fall Town Meeting for. And then we've got some new ones, the ADU zoning bylaw. You saw that before. It needs some tweaks. Now there's some guidance from the state, so we're gonna revise and revamp that and get it back to you for Annual Town Meeting. That's a state mandate again. There's made changes to section, MGL, section forty A, the state statute on zoning, and it sort of allows accessory dwelling units by right. So not a major shift for Lunenburg, but still something we have to review, and you're familiar with it. We just need to, to get it tightened up a little bit. So we'll be doing that in January. And along with that, the DCR has told us that they have maps, flood maps that they're updating. That's always fun at Town Meeting, but, so there will be zoning changes. They have a zoning model bylaw that they'll be proposing. Obviously, in Lunenburg, we, you know, look at everything, and we make sure it's in the interest of Lunenburg locally, to the extent they allow laws. So that's what we'll be doing in January as well, aiming for Annual Town Meeting to get that adopted. And that's all I, I think that's all I'll cover right for now.
Do we know if the news, if the new flood maps are, I mean, any change in a flood map is notable because it impacts someone, one way or another? Do we know if the, if they were particularly notable, the Lunenburg flood map changes? And I'm fine if we don't know the answer off the top of our head.
We know, you can bet. I haven't seen anything, and all it's been is sort of this directive.
Okay.
We're gonna be working with you on this, and we have a model bylaw, but you can bet that the floodplain maps will increase the floodplains in several categories. So that always has an impact and gets people nervous. So, you know, it's, it's an increase in the regulatory framework of floodplain management. It's important, but we'll have to take some time on that, January, February, look at their model bylaw, make sure it's consistent with local needs, and go from there. But not a, not a, you know, swift or easy lift, something we have to scrutinize fairly well. I'll get you all the information I can as I meet with them and talk through what they have available.
I have a question. I mean, the, the ADU zoning, we're gonna shoot for Annual Town Meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, what you, so you remember you had it, and you gave a favorable recommendation in Town Meeting, and that was the right recommendation, but Town Council sort of at the eleventh hour identified some things that might be problematic, that weren't consistent with the statute, or maybe the Attorney General's review. And so it was decided, let's get this right. You had the water district thing. We didn't, we didn't want everything on your plate that might get people really, you know, agitated. So gotta do it right, and now we have a model bylaw that Town Council's recommending to other clients, to other towns. So that's the one, I think, that we do, rather than trying to take the old one and, and patch it and repair it, take the model bylaw that they've been recommending with the new guidance and get you something that's clean and, and strong and, you know, that'll be tight for, for Town Meeting. That's the idea.
Very good. And I also have a comment on the flood map update. I think our flood maps go back to eighties, late eighties. I think it's the last update we had on our flood maps, and I can tell you from experience in Concord, they did their update six or eight years ago, I believe, and there were some areas that went up a foot or two in elevation. So it could be a considerable change. It may not be, just FYI.
Well, we know that flooding is happening. I don't want to, like, jump ahead, but make assumptions, but getting more flooding, more extreme flooding, these events are happening more frequently. That's obviously part of what's inspiring these changes by the DCR. Normally FEMA handles this, and, and a lot of times has an effect on people's flood insurance, so that gets people really excited. Not so much an issue here, but we'll just have to make sure all of Lunenburg's interests are, you know, taken into account, and that takes a lot of scrutiny and just exactly, you know, what their model bylaw. I can, I can tell you, I won't be recommending whatever their model bylaw is, you know, in black and white. We're gonna have to look at Lunenburg's interest and tweak it according to that within the law.
I'm sorry, did you say our, our flood insurance rate maps are being updated, or?
No, no, this is, yeah, that's a different thing from, normally from FEMA, the firm maps, the flood insurance.
Okay.
So that could affect people monetarily and, you know. This is more of a regulatory thing, and I don't think it'll affect the insurance maps much, but, so, you know, don't get panicky that that's what's underway here, but until we understand it, right now it's just changing the flood maps to reflect the reality on the ground, really, according to their data.
Okay. Thank you.
I did not know those were separate things. I guess, I, see, I got smarter today.
They're a little, yeah. Firm maps are, you know, it's a dramatic impact usually in the coastal zones. High-velocity zones on the coast. We don't have that fortunate.
All right, great. That moves us on to public hearings. We'll take them right down the list in order. And that begins us with four ninety-four electric Ave. And for those following around at home who might not memorize addresses, this is effectively ill for no and adjacent property.
Mr. Chair, if I may, through you to the board, just an up, quick update on this before we get into discussion, but fortunately, the peer reviewer has not been able to complete the peer review or allow them a response for this meeting. That was the intention of continuing the meeting. So we do have something to talk about, but that'll have to wait until January thirteenth, so apologies to the applicant for the delay.
Understood.
They're short a man in their office, so.
And I, I believe you were in contact with them also, so.
Yeah, no, I'm in contact with Piers. I'm here at projects. It's not just you.
Great. Well, thank you. We don't need to, oh, we don't need any fancy words because it's already been opened. We're just reopening, correct? Great. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, I-
So the one other item that we continue to is for Town Council response on the issue of Pierce Avenue, the status of Pierce Avenue. We still have not gotten a response from, from Town Council. We'll be talking to him Wednesday in his office hours. Trying to figure out what, if, if anything, he needs and how he intends to proceed with advising the Planning Board and the applicant. But so far, we haven't gotten that. So I do know there's been some discussions, and I'll just sort of put it out there, that some people have recommended maybe looking at Pierce Ave and keeping it public and, and the Planning Board consideration of that, allowing parking waivers, because that's the issue with Pierce Ave, right, to, to allow the parking for the most part access.
Well, under, under your bylaw, the zoning bylaw requires that everything be on one lot. So that's our position, that we do everything on one lot.
Yeah. So there's another option here, something to discuss between the applicant, if you're amenable, but, so, other than that, we'll have to wait for Town Council, or I would recommend if we don't hear anything by the end of the week, we just proceed and assume there isn't a problem with the applicant's position because we can't obviously just keep continuing without Town Council responding, so.
And just to assist, Attorney Pellegrini, the workforce also reached out and left a message to Town Council, so there's a method they can communicate, and it just hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, you should be talking to each other about what exactly Town Council is looking for, if anything, to complete his assessment.
Again, we hired Attorney Pellegrini as our expert, so he gave us an opinion. So I don't, you know, I don't have his backwork. I wouldn't have that he, we paid for an opinion letter, so Attorney Pellegrini has all of the, you know, the abstract and the backwork, and from what I understand, he has no problem sharing it or providing information.
Yeah, so if there's something Town Council feels like he, you know, further he needs, or we don't know what it is, and-
No, understood. I mean, and again, you know, in, in my world, if an attorney gives you an opinion letter, you know, the only other thing the town could do is hire their own abstracter and do the same exercise that we did, and, you know, if they come up with a different conclusion, you know, show it to us, but, you know, we're pretty confident that's our conclusion.
Yeah, in that scenario, I think if I may to the board, from what I understand from the town manager and so forth, they would be looking for the applicant to pay for that analysis. So that would be something you'd, you'd need to consider, whether you fear-
It's a, it's a title abstract. I mean, it's not, it's not a huge expense.
Yeah, yeah, so that may be what Town Council, but we need to get the answer one way or the other, so I'll work on that.
Nope, I understand, but again, we, you know, my client's, you know, perspective, we'd like to keep moving forward and, you know, and work with you to come up with a solution here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd love to do that, too. It's sort of, the legal, it is a legal question on the status of Pierce Ave, so.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to check, what, what business do we or can we cover with this tonight? Or have we really hit on most of it? Of course, this, this is a public hearing. I want to make sure, we'll give the public a chance to speak as well. That will happen. Is it right?
We've gotten public input about some of the butter concerns, so if there's, you know, condition language or things that the applicant's willing to put on the plans in terms of mitigation, particularly in between the restaurant and the residential neighborhood, this would be things like plantings, landscaping, fencing, birmingham, things that control the types of public input we've received, that would be worth, I think, a, a discussion now to start to work on that for the decision.
Yep, so Chris Herring's with Handing and Engineering. I think at this point, we received all those comments. I want to take everything globally impactful at the same time, rather than trying to piecemeal things, because my experience, it never ends well. Something gets lost through the minutia, if you will, but, you know, we did receive a lot of those comments from the various, you know, butters and stuff like that, and we're gonna be looking at incorporating those into the plan in one comprehensive plan change. So I think, you know, we've, we've definitely heard their concerns. We're not ignoring them. We're just waiting to get all our information in one shot so we don't have to have a bunch of plans floating around with different ideas and stuff like that. So I think at this point, Mr. Pellegrini's in agreement with me, you know, pushing this off to the next available meeting. Hopefully, we'll get peer review comments back. We can coordinate with the peer reviewer to get them addressed, as well as the many comments from town staff. So I think at this point, we can just move this process along, you know, obviously public comment, but I think from our perspective, we've, we're at a standstill until we get peer review and Town Council's final determination.
Okay, great. Just want to make, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can as we can, but I'm also not trying to push us to put the cart before the horse. And please, we, I know we have members of the public here, and they've previously spoken on this topic. I don't know if you'd like to again or not, but public comment for four ninety-four electric Ave. Again, please, come on up, and as always, when, as a reminder for everyone, when you come up, share your name and your address, as well as if you're online and want to speak for public comment, do use that hand raise feature. You don't have to wait. Just get that hand raise feature in so that Logan is aware.
Good evening. Michael Lovewell, four, I got too many addresses. Seven, five seventy-nine Reservoir Road. I'm thinking of too many properties. So I will say that the applicant did hook up a drainage system off the new building and alleviated, I believe, the flooding that we were getting on fifteen Kirby. I, I do think he just kicked the can a little further down the road, and I'm hoping the engineer will probably address it at some point about that parking lot when it gets reconfigured, but the water is just steaming into the parking lot now. So it's, 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 it's not going into the fifteen Kirby property. It's now into his property, and it's gonna run down and then across, and eventually get down into thirteen and go down that way there, so. But he did do that, so that I'm very thankful for. So I'd have to listen to that tenant back there, so that's good. But the other thing, when you guys are talking tonight, you guys have a serious flooding issue down there on Whalen Road in thirteen that really, at some point, is gonna have to get addressed. I don't know how you guys are gonna handle that, but you got to be careful with all the water. That place, it can get really bad down there. I mean, those poor people get washed out when we get torrential rains down there. And, you know, all the water starts at the top of the hill and it runs down. So you got to make sure it goes into catch basins and things like that, and I don't have to water, those catch basins can actually handle the water, like the flow that goes down through there. But that's something that, when you were just talking about the flooding and stuff like that, that's a big area down there. That is a big concern.
So what I can tell you is flooding across the town is a big concern for local government. I hear it discussed here. I hear it discussed at Capital Planning. It's not as big a discussion this year at Capital Planning, only because our funds have helped with some of the, effectively the drainage mitigation projects that normally Capital Planning would fund. But in terms, just so everyone, including our, our viewers at home are on the same page, this is one of those things where what the Planning Board can do is very important, but also very limited. We can, when a property is being developed in certain ways that trigger our stormwater bylaw, we can make sure and insist that that bylaw is followed to prevent flood issues. We also have the ability to write and propose bylaws that could put different requirements in or other such things. We also, Mr. Wilsner, who's not here tonight, is our representative to the Stormwater Task Force that is, to my understanding, looking long-term at establishing a stormwater utility to help address and pay for some of these issues. That, that's a multi-year process. And, but again, the Planning Board is about land use, so if there's an immediate flood issue on the roads, contact the DPW, make sure they are aware of it.
They're aware of it.
Yeah. And if there is an issue, if there's an issue with flooding on someone's property that they think should not be there due to inappropriate runoff or something else, where do they reach out for that normally?
Making contact, the Land Use Department, myself, or the Building Inspector.
Hopefully, you saw those videos. Hopefully, you saw that video that we sent you.
Yeah, so you do have a serious existing problem.
So I think what he did will take care of that property, but as I said, it's just gonna move it down the road a little further, so.
Yeah, we, and-
Which is good. I mean, honestly, I'd rather see it come down that way. At least it's in a paved area, so not running through the wall. But that's good. I'm actually glad he did that.
So there's several things that we would look at. We'd look at private development, how it was permitted, whether there's existing permits that we need to look at in terms of conditions and make sure they're satisfied, and the drainage is being maintained. It isn't just putting something in the ground-
Right.
-for the proposed condition. It's maintaining it that's important, and that's always in the decisions that are approved. But, well, we can talk to DPW about, in the public way, whether their infrastructure is being maintained. So it's got, it's got to be a comprehensive approach.
Yeah, and I'm just-
The water's hydraulic, and it's gonna find its own level.
Right.
So.
And I'm just curious to see the plan when they finally do it for, for their, just, you know, just for keeping everybody safe over there, because there's a lot of water that comes, you know, if you ever walk the back of that property on fifteen Kirby, I bet the elevation is five feet or more to four ninety-four. I bet it's, I bet it's four and a half, five feet, the elevation difference, just there.
Yeah.
And as you keep going down into that Whalen area, it just keeps going down, so.
Well, it's like there's water velocity, which-
Yeah, everybody has water problems there. That's the biggest issue. Now, stormwater is only triggered when you, what, disturb an acre or more?
Yeah, I, I, I don't remember if there's other edge cases that can get it, but that's the big one, disturbing an acre or more.
Right. So a lot of properties of things, they don't get, they don't go through stormwater if they're-
That, that is true. And, and in being realistic, Lunenburg has a much tighter trigger than most communities. We, we trigger our stormwater bylaw well before most communities would trigger theirs. We, again, that's part, that was part of our kind of proactive design. When we saw the writing on the wall, the stormwater was an increasing issue.
It is an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comment?
Bob Pease, eleven Wintergreen Court. It's my understanding that part of this problem that exists at this institution is because the applicant put up, was allowed to put up a tent during COVID, and then he applied to this board, and this board allowed him to take that tent, which was on parking lot, and, you know, convert it into building. And, you know, it's a longstanding business in town. I think town boards have an obligation to support, you know, our businesses in town, and, you know, if that approval contributed to this problem, I think this board has a moral obligation to help try to solve it. And I'm here to say that and try to be supportive of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pease. Any other public comment? All right. Any board comment or questions at this time?
Just for the motion, they're looking to continue to January twenty-seventh?
January thirteenth?
I don't see anything before the twenty-seventh on the-
Yeah, it's not listed on our agenda for January thirteenth.
Yeah, so our next official meeting is January thirteenth.
I apologize. That's a, that's a scripturner's error.
So we could continue to that, and we better have our docs in a row by then, the peer review, and, and I anticipate we will, based on my conversation with Mr. Walsh from Gray's Engineering.
Yeah, let's, let's plan on the thirteenth if something comes up between now and then that either we can't get the appropriate documents back to peer review or peer review. A myriad of different options that can go forward. I think the thirteenth, if you find it, we can reach out to town staff and request a continuance if needed.
So on the thirteenth, we're looking for a full revised set incorporating town comments, peer review comments, public comments to date, so that we can begin to consider approval or?
That would be the game plan, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that, that's on right to the board?
Let me.
I, I do have an additional comment, though. So this is not just stormwater, which I understand doesn't have a time clock, but does our site plan approval permit have a time clock?
Site plan review does not.
It's approval, not review anymore?
Yeah. Site plan review is not under the statute-
Very good.
-for the same shot clock.
Mm-hmm. All right. So then we might look for a motion to continue the public hearing for four ninety-four electric Ave to no, to November, no, to January thirteenth at six oh five PM.
Still moves.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll speak with Town Council Wednesday, and I'll have some kind of-
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Have a happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind sending me, if, if I could sneak in for that meeting, too, just to hear the same words? That would be helpful for me if that's okay?
Yeah, four o'clock Wednesday.
Okay, I'll just get it from you later.
I can change it.
No, don't worry. I'll, I'll look and see if it works on my schedule. Great, and if not- I'll look and see if it works on my schedule. Great. And if not, oh, well. Just good. I'd love to be another set of ears.
Sure.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Now, the hearings for seven ninety-one Lemminster Road, seven ninety-five Lemminster Road, and seventy Kilburn Street. I'm aware that they are separate public hearings, need to be treated as such. However, they, did they, do I understand correctly, the applicant requested a continuance?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I informed him that we still didn't have the peer review report yet for any of them. And so the engineer, the applicants engineer is the same. And so sort of gave him some consideration, come in and discuss with you the status. But he talked to his clients and asked for a continuance to January thirteenth. They're fine with that. So we'll be looking for the peer review reports, which is the only outstanding item.
Okay.
Graves Engineering indicated they could do it by then.
Sure. Great. And we don't need a motion to continue to then because we're not reopening tonight, are we? Or do we?
We need a motion to continue to a date certain.
Okay.
It's on the agenda tonight, so a motion to continue to January thirteenth for seven ninety-one, seven ninety-five Lemminster and seventy Kilburn.
At six oh five P M.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Wonderful. Moving on to five five eight and five sixty Goodrich Street. Special permit for a common driveway.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December ninth, twenty twenty-four at six oh five P M. Town Hall, seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review an application for special permit and stormwater management permit respectively pursuant to two fifty dash six point four C as amended at the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Special Town Meeting and two oh four dash one D as amended at the November seventeenth, twenty twenty Special Town Meeting of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg by the Easterbrook Nominee Trust for creation of a new building lot with frontage along Goodrich Street involving modification of the lot lines between the two existing parcels for compliance with zoning. The subject property information, the location is five five eight and five six zero Goodrich Street, Lunenburg, Mass. Oh, one four six two. Assessor's map, one three three. Parcel numbers ten and eleven. Owner is the Eastbrook Nominee Trust. The materials are viewable online at lunenburgma portal dot opengov dot com slash search. Via email request to the Planning Office Administrative Assistant, L O C O N N E L L at lunenburgma.gov or in person at the Planning Office at nine sixty Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass. That's a lot, that one.
Yeah.
It is.
Woo wee!
Jeez.
All right.
All righty. For the record, Chris Anderson with Handing and Engineering here, half of the Easterbrook Nominee Trust. We're here before you tonight for a special permit for a common driveway as well as stormwater management permit. As was previously stated, the project is located at five five eight and five sixty Goodrich Street. The two properties are already being currently served by an existing common driveway, which was established circa nineteen ninety-five. So it's a well-established common driveway in the area. The driveway is approximately thirty-five feet at the intersection with Goodrich Street, and then gradually tapers down to about twenty-one towards the rear portion of the site. There is currently a hundred, or hundred-foot diameter turnaround area incorporated into the actual common driveway for vehicle turnaround within the development itself. But it's the intent of the applicant to effectively bring the proposed dri, or the current driveway into current standards in order to provide access to a fourth residential lot. The proposed work is located on five five eight and five sixty, but the driveway also serves the abutting property to the south through an old easement as well. So that easement's not going to be extinguished. It's going to be effectively wrapped up into this redesign. We're not really affecting their driveway in this portion of the site. The majority of the work associated with specifically the common driveway would be to widen certain areas of the driveway to bring it into full compliance with the regulation. And that's primarily located in small bits and pieces, but the lion's share of it is located towards the tail end of the common driveway, which will be widened to accommodate the requirements. Additional stormwater features will be implemented primarily as infiltration trenches along the outer edges of the driveway. Since the driveway is pretty much intact, we're just trying to capture the small increases in previous area throughout the site. This will provide access to a new residential lot, which will be deemed Lot Number Three, which will be located along the southerly portion of the driveway. Access to, will be provided off the driveway, obviously, with additional stormwater management features on that locus property. As part of the projects, we're not impeding upon any jurisdictional areas subject to the protection acts. The entirety of the development is located outside of those areas. We are requesting a few waivers relative to the design of the actual driveway itself. Specifically, the rounding of the driveway intersection to show approximately fifteen feet rather than the required thirty, only because the existing Goodrich Street is a generally narrow road, and it would appear odd for having a large radii coming into the site. We can make the thirty-foot work. We're just trying to save appearance functions, if you will. In addition to that, the requirement of providing the turnarounds as described within the actual bylaw, the bylaw requires an eight-foot offset. It's about twenty-five feet long. The site currently already has a large turnaround area that's been functioning effectively very well since the inception of the driveway. And it's the request from the board that we maintain that turnaround area in perpetuity, if you will. We did get comment, come, comments back from various departments. One of them was the Fire Department, who weighed in on the actual waivers. They were in favor of the turnaround waiver, but they were questioning whether or not about the radii. So we will, as part of our various revisions, review with the Fire Department access and accessibility to make sure that they're okay with what, whatnot. So that's forthcoming, obviously. We're still waiting to hear back, or I believe the board needs to vote on whether or not the Senate's a peer review or not. We're fully expecting a peer review of this. So with that being said, if there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to answer them.
You preempted most of mine, because it was going to be about, what is, do we know what the Fire Department thinks? Because most of our, I mean, the radii and everything were dictated by them originally.
Yep.
So. Questions from the board?
I'm looking for the way up, I found them. Never mind. Thank you.
So I'm looking. I see it comes off Goodrich Street. House on the left, big turnaround. House on the right. And so this is, the current common driveway is for, providing for two houses, is that correct?
Three houses. So the third house, five sixty, is located much further off the road and further upland into the development. So Lot Number Two is a large lot that, where the house is actually located several hundred feet past the actual house on the right, if you will.
Okay, I see that. Got it. And this would add development possibility on Lot Number Three?
Correct. One's, one single lot would be added to the common driveway.
Okay, and Lot Number Three does have the, I don't see the frontage listed on the plan. Maybe I'm missing it. Do, do you know what the?
So the frontage for Lot Number Three would be a hundred feet.
Okay.
And that would be provided off of Goodrich Street. Reason why we're going for the amending the common driveway to be more in line with the current regulation is that in order to gain access to Lot Number Three, we'd have to cross a wetland. It is doable. We have delineated the wetlands. It's well below the threshold of five thousand square feet, so it is a doable process. But we feel that under the bylaws, the various requirements of the special permit for the bylaw, this falls directly in line with that. So that's why we're requesting amending the existing driveway to bring it into compliance rather than a whole new driveway.
I'm of the opinion that this is the exact sort of situation why we amended that, why we changed that bylaw.
What do we change it to, that it can access something that does not front on the?
No, you cannot do that. No. You, when we changed it, we still required all lots to have proper frontage. But that, so the frontage is there. You can't create, more or less, you can't create more buildable lots, but it can give you better access to the lot, including not trampling wetlands, as one example.
So I guess my question was, does our current new bylaw allow for frontage on one road to be accessed from different road through the common driveway?
So, if I may.
Please.
So we have Goodrich Street that runs along the side of the page here. The red lines, I don't see them too well. Those are the proposed property lines. So all access is coming off Goodrich Street, with the common driveway being right here. The Lot Number Three, which is the new lot that we're intending to develop, has frontage along Goodrich Street. In order to gain access to that, we would have to cross a portion of the wetland to gain uplands.
My bad.
We're not creating frontage
Perfect.
with the driveway. We're just relocating the egress point to the lot room down here. It's up here.
And that is exactly why we did the bylaw.
Yeah. All right. And I noticed in the, the notes, there was some discussion. And it was, I just wanted to make sure we clarified. It is twelve hundred feet, correct, for our, our bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. Super.
There was also a difference there about provision of town water versus not provision of town water? Was that the case? We had a difference between if it was on town water or if it was not on town water. And it was because of the hydrants, I believe.
That was, and I don't remember if that was only in the commercial district or not, off the top of my head.
I think that was only in the commercial district.
Yeah. Because in commercial, we allowed longer. I think it was twelve fifty residential or twelve hundred residential and something like fifteen hundred commercial common driveways. The same as the residential can be up to four, if memory serves, and commercial could be six units.
Right.
All right. Questions, thoughts from the board? Because this is a public hearing, do we have members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions?
Evening. My name's Eric Solander. I live at five five eight Goodrich, so I'm in the house on the right. Been there nearly thirty years. The intention was to, at some date in the future, we were going to have a house lot preserved for one of the kids. And that's really what's happening now. So this bylaw that's changed to allow for additional house lot on a common driveway really assisted. And it's a good time to have a kid, a local kid that went through the program, stay in Lunenburg and build his home. That's kind of where we are. If you have any questions, I mean, I've been maintaining the property for thirty years, so mowing and field and whatnot. So I can tell you anything you'd really want to know about it.
Great.
But appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? None in the chat either? Well, in the, in the Zoom, it looks like at this time either, so. Great. So it sounds like we would need the peer review. And I don't have any other questions at this time.
So the question, again, to the, to the Land Use Director, do we need to move second and vote on the peer review, or can?
Yeah, I think procedurally, that's what I'd recommend. Is just to have a vote to assign the peer reviewer for the stormwater and common driveway application, and then the amount, which I don't think has to be more than three thousand dollars in this case. The review's not going to cost that much, but just to cover it under our regulations. I think you get a little discretion there of you know, a stringent number. I think that would be adequate.
Would a so moved be sufficient? Would a so moved be sufficient?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I had a follow-up question.
Which is Graves Engineering will be the peer reviewer.
I asked a similar question before about the peer reviews. And I think this is pretty much the same situation, except with the clarity that it's apparently he owns the land that he's looking to build a house on. So the regulations require he hire a, an engineer to do the, the stormwater plan.
This, this is not stormwater yet.
Okay.
If, when the, if the day comes, the applicant decides to build another house, being a single family, so actually, I don't think it matters if it's a single family or not. If that process is going to disturb an acre of land, that will trigger stormwater bylaw. If it does not, if it will not trigger, I mean, if it won't disturb an acre of land, it does not trigger stormwater bylaw.
I guess it's just not clear to me, and I'm, and it's, I'm sure it's at my end, if, if we're requiring him to hire two experts to protect his own interests?
I'll ask the applicant, if I may, to the board.
So.
Do you have a problem with us hiring the peer reviewer for stormwater and the common driveway?
So we prefer that Graves Engineering, the peer review for the engineer, or for the town, review everything, house lot and driveway at the same time. I am the professional engineer for the project, so he hired me to do the work.
Right.
And Graves is now doing their thing to check my work, if you will. So I think we're all still on the same, we're all on the same bandwidth. So usually when we do projects like this, the applicant hires an engineer to do the work for him. And then the town hires their own engineer to check my work, if you will, so.
Very good. Thank you.
And you are going to proceed upon approval of this concurrently with an A R, A and R plan and stormwater plan? I mean, that's the obvious intent.
Correct.
So does this all sound reasonable to you?
Yep. So once everything is, once we have a favorable action by the board, we will be submitting an A and R plan to get that lot line switched over. So that is in the, in the cards, if you will, to get the ball rolling.
And, and to answer Mr. McLeod's question, we have had, in my time on the board, we've had at least one common driveway, I think we've had a couple, where our peer reviewer came back and Graves Engineering, in that case as well, came back and said, hold the phone, because we have other requirements, slope and everything else, and said, this doesn't match the actual bylaw. That, that, you know, we, we have more requirements than just layout. There's things like proper grading and everything so that it can be traversed safely. A lower slope area near the road for, I don't know why that is a requirement, I assume, but it is. And that's a common thing in these kinds of bylaws. So that's what they look for to kind of make sure, because things do get missed.
Yeah. It just seems surprising to me that you hire a professional, then you have to hire a professional to review the professional's findings, so.
I can add to that. So the, the engineer before us now is, is presenting a plan that's in the interest of the homeowner.
Right.
But the review engineer is, so to speak, protecting the interest of the town
Fair enough.
in, in regard to the bylaw?
Makes sense. Thank you.
Which doesn't suggest that the applicants engineer is, is doing anything that, other than.
Of course not.
But it's a good point.
All right. Great. I, so, Mr. McLeod, it seemed like you, you were voicing your concern, so I don't know that the last vote took. Because you, you did not vote. You were saying, hey, wait a second, correct? Okay. So I will, again, to have, looking for a motion for.
To assign Graves Engineering as the peer reviewer for the common driveway application before you and the stormwater design that we're expecting. And the amount would be three thousand dollars to cover those peer review services. And the applicant's consented?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And what I should say in these cases is, is there any other discussion?
Not this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
All right.
And then we would look to
Continue.
continue this to a date. And then we would look to continue this to a date certain. What, are we thinking January 13th? Are we thinking?
Yes, let's plan on the 13th of the time being. If something comes up, we'll reach out to staff and coordinate another time or a continuance request.
Great. So we could have a motion to continue the special permit common hearing. Comment. Worth, to continue the public hearing for 558 and 560 Goodrich Street to January 13th at 6:05 PM.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Is, so is, this is an additional peer review by Graves, who's already backed up on how many of our peer reviews?
Four.
So you think the 13th is going to give time for a new project to be reviewed?
Yeah, and speaking with him, I mean, the board needs peer reviews, they rely on them, so that's an essential part of your deliberation. We've got to, got to have it, we've got to try to accommodate the applicant in a timely way. So I would say, I just talked with him today and stressed, you know, we're really getting behind the eight ball here. Can you accelerate things? And he assured me that he would have the four outstanding items pretty much completed within the next two weeks. And then he'd have a little bandwidth to take on the new applications. So that is, that's the expectation.
It's kind of moot anyway, because you're going to be here again anyway for the O4O thing, so that was my concern.
All right. So again, if, if we are looking to continue, we could continue the public hearing for 558 and 560 Goodrich Street to January 13th at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 171 Arbor Street. Another application for stormwater management permit and a special permit for the common driveway.
This is the new one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December 9th, 2024, at 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass, to hear and review an application for special permit and stormwater management permit, respectively pursuant to 250-6.4C, as amended at the November 14th, 2023, Special Town Meeting, and 204-1D, as amended at the November 17th, 2020, Special Town Meeting of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg, PSG Realty 281 LLC, for construction of a common driveway to serve three single-family home lots as part of the proposed development of the site. Subject property information, the location is 171 Arbor Street, Lunenburg, Mass, 01462. Assessor's map, 68 parcel number 21. Owner is PSG Realty 281 LLC at 133 Shirley Leominster Road in Lunenburg, Mass. You can view the materials online at lunenburgma便portal.opengov.com search. Via email request to the Planning Office Administrative Assistant, L O C O N N E L L at lunenburgma.gov, and in person at the Planning Office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
Good evening. Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering, here tonight on behalf of PSG Realty. We started the application process for this property last September. We filed for a four-lot conventional subdivision. As it went through the review process with conservation, concurrently with planning, National Heritage and Nature Species Program identified that we were in priority habitat. We ordered a habitat assessment by LEC Environmental. If you're familiar with the site, there's a gravel section in the middle of the site that was excavated 30, 40, 50-plus years ago. It's remained an open gravelly sandy area, and the Blandings turtle established some nesting habitat in the middle of the site. So we spent a few months working with NESHAP to come to an agreed development that they were accepting, that they would be happy with. And that's basically the layout you see before you here today. We ended up withdrawing the subdivision. And we figured out with the orientation of the lot lines, the only way we could get three lots was with a common driveway. We could have done a three-lot subdivision, but it would require a much bigger impact, meeting all subdivision standards for the roadway. So in figuring out this layout, a butter here, John Rodenot, he approached us to really promote the common drive route versus a subdivision. Because if we came forward here with a common driveway, we were about 11 feet short of frontage for the third lot. So we have two reduced frontage lots and then one full frontage lot. So that started the process with ZBA. So we put the plans together, we filed an A and R plan, put an A and R plan together showing the lot line reconfigurations with the neighbor. And we were able to obtain the special permit for, with ZBA, for the lot line variations that we worked through. So we just finished that, so now we're coming back. We filed with conservation as well, they've approved it. It ended up being, previously, we had a buffer zone impact of about 80, 80-plus thousand square feet, which was, worked within the buffer zones up here, through the middle of the site, and basically along the whole perimeter of the buffer. It reduced the impact from about 80,000 square feet down to about 16, 17,000 square feet. So conservation was happy with the amendments that we've made. They did issue us an order of conditions. So now we're before you guys here tonight. The last step is for the special permit for stormwater as well as for the common drive. So. So as I said, we started out with four lots, we're back down now to a three-lot common drive. Part of the negotiations with the neighbor is, he was lacking lot area, and he was lacking lot width through a building. So there were two non-conformances with zoning. So in working this out, we ended up, the applicant ended up giving him this parcel laid back here to give him an extra 50 feet of buffer from his, his yard to proposed development. So now he's conforming with lot area in the zone. And we also are giving him, or putting a deed restriction on this piece of property right here, as you see, that's undeveloped, adjacent to his lot. So outside of our proposed grading limits, there will be a deed restriction on this particular lot, as well as he has a right of first refusal for, for lot one, when we go to clear this and develop it. So we're maintaining a much bigger buffer around this property. And by not proposing a full subdivision roadway, we don't need to build this up to subdivision standard. So when you go to this property, there's currently an existing driveway that comes down at the location we're proposing. So we're, we're trying to maintain as close to existing the grades that are there, again, in order to further minimize the amount of disturbance up along the frontage. So looking at the common drive provisions, we're providing the minimum pavement width of 18 feet. There's an easement width of 24 feet per year regulations. The maximum grade in this location is 10%, just for this 20, 30-foot run, just to dip down. Maximum number of lots is four, but we're proposing three here. We're not going for the fourth lot, because we don't have the frontage for it. The roadway length, the common driveway starts at the lot line, and it ends basically here, just beyond the house. So just beyond this house's driveway, there's about another 200-some-odd feet of driveway, just for this back lot. It's all on his property. So common driveway from Arbor Street up to the limit of where the driveway is restricted from 18 to 16 feet, we have about 367 feet. So it's well within the length, the maximum length of the common driveway. The rest of the provisions within the common drive geometry, curb radii have not less than 30 feet, so these radii at Arbor Street are 30 feet. The other items in here, I think would, like comments like from fire department about the adequacy of the roadway and things like that, will be met. The turnouts, I didn't show any driveway turnouts here. We have a 375-foot, or 370, I think it was two feet roadway length from here to the end of the common drive. We have a driveway here where they could turn out. It's, it's a very flat area in here, so we easily provide one here. I'm sure Graves is going to say the same thing, so that's something we'll provide, we'll just provide a small turnout right here. And if the fire department requires it, this area right here, these grades can be pulled back. I can provide like a 30-foot by 40-foot flat gravel pad for them. So we can easily provide a fire truck turnaround right here, kind of in the middle of, you know, the, the three lots. So I'm assuming that will be something that Graves does comment on. So between now and when we actually talk with Graves, I did speak with, with Jeff Walsh. You know, we can add these couple of things to the plan, just before I sent him off to him, so, to try to get in front of him, to limit his comments at the end. And then with respect to stormwater, this site is a, it's straight sand and gravel. It's super, super porous, it's great for infiltration. Right here off the entrance of the, of the driveway, there's a large depression on both sides of the existing driveway that's there now. They're, they're substantial in size, and they act as, as small detention infiltration basins right now for roadway that, that comes down off of Arbor Street, it just runs on the property from the roadway, because there's no drainage in the roadway. So there's, it's more than adequate infiltration up along the, the entrance to the site. We are proposing the way it's graded. The driveways will drain to their own shoulders. We have peystone diaphragms running along each shoulder of the driveway. Also down here, it's graded so that the water in both the driveway and the common driveway run to the rain gardens for all three of these houses. So the stormwater report captures all those provisions. It shows that we meet the one-inch water quality volume for all storm events, so both the 90% TSS and 60% phosphorus removal are, are met. The. All right, so then as I said before, conservation has seen this, they have reviewed it, and they have issued the order of conditions. So stormwater-wise, we feel we're all set. Common driveway-wise, we feel like we meet all the provisions, with the exception of a couple of comments that I made about the, the turnouts for cars and, and fire access, if, if required. And that's really it, it meets, we have the zoning tables here that show that they're all buildable lots, and they meet zoning. So, you know, we feel we have a, a good application here that, that you guys could certainly review and vote on. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them.
Great. Okay, I do see, I, I was looking for the rain gardens at first, but now I, I see them, they're.
Those, these, these three shaded areas.
Yep.
And there's a detail on the detail sheet that labels specifically the amount of plantings that are to be placed in each.
Great. I saw that design component, then it went like, it must be on the plan, and I missed it. Yep, I missed it. That was easy.
And just to add a little more detail to NESHAP. Once, once we get through, we got as far as we could with the National Heritage Program. Now they require us to get local permits. And once we get the final local permits, we send the plan with all the permits and packages back to them, and they do their final conditions of approval. So we couldn't finalize with NESHAP until we finalized all of our permits with planning and conservation.
Okay, that's good to understand, thank you.
And they require, like the deed restriction thing, they're going to have deed restrictions on the back lots here. This lot's out of the priority habitat area. But these lots, they'll condition specifically in their approval. We have split rail fences on here, these fences are required by NESHAP. We're going to have to have bounds installed and monumented with the deeds that shows the, the no disturb areas outside of our limited work. And then those, these areas, everything basically north of the grading you see here, or not northeast, is going to have a deed restriction in perpetuity about development.
This is really just for my own edification, it doesn't apply to the board directly. What, what species?
It's the Blandings turtle.
I'm sorry?
The Blandings turtle.
Oh, okay, neat. Thank you. All right, I'll turn to the board for questions, and then we'll go to the public.
Very creative, I like this solution. Good. Working with the neighbors, excellent thing. Given the sands and gravels, do you think that the rain gardens are going to be able to sustain the vegetation?
Yes, so these rain gardens, if you've seen, just in the past year, a very similar setup to this is the one on Reservoir Road, 680 Reservoir Road. It's right next to the baseball field. We've got two rain gardens that were in almost straight sand.
Thank you.
And around the plantings, they, they put a substantial loamy layer. And the, the neighbors, you know, the homeowner's been doing great about watering it. It's, it's lived all summer and all fall, and they look great and they're thriving.
Great.
Great.
I do have another, if you're going to consider the, the, the northerly lot as, as a turnout for the common driveway, I think you'd need a downslope radii, just because it looks like a fire truck would have to drive down and back up and turn around to pull back?
Yeah, and the way, the way it's, it's usually goes with the fire departments, they'll allow them to back up 150 to 200 feet to get to these areas. So, you know, from the roadway basically to this house, you know, we'll, we'll radius the pavement in there, fit something in here. And even up here is a real big flat area, if we had to do it. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll work something out with the distances to, to make it work. But I think adding maybe one car turnaround here, and then a fire truck turnaround here, that fire truck turnaround is going to be more than wide enough and long enough to accommodate even passenger vehicle. I think that those are the only two we'd probably likely need on this roadway.
Great. Other questions from the board? Yeah, I, I also just wanted to echo that everything Mr. Allison said, but also, this is just a, a real smart use of the common driveway setup.
Yeah.
It was, it was a, it was a great situation where, you know, typically, I'm used to neighbors fighting, everything they're doing. He called me, he came to my office. I didn't even know that last November, the four-lot common drive provision was, was, you know, approved by the town. So he enlightened me. We sat down and sketched it out, and he showed me that you could do it, but you're short on frontage. But I can give you the frontage if we, I'm like, perfect, let's talk. You know, it took, took nine months, but, you know, we're, we're here, so. And it's a, it is a, it's a better, it's a less, less of an impact. We're getting just as many lots out of the property as we would with a conventional subdivision, so.
Great.
It worked well.
And the town never has to plow those driveways.
Mm-hmm. And all the stormwater runs off to the back.
Yeah.
Nothing goes to the roadway.
Love it. All right, I'll look out for public comment. Yep, just come on up, and before you speak, share your name and your address.
Good evening, my name's Kyle Edmonds, 201 Arbor Street. I guess my concern is that last comment about the rainwater and the stormwater management running off to the back is, knowing that this was a gravel pit, I was under the impression that the town wasn't necessarily in favor of former gravel pits being built on, given the issues with former pits having high groundwater levels, which can further complicate these projects. So my concern is, if that rainwater is going to be going off to the back, how does it impact neighboring properties like my own and deteriorating my usable land? If all that rainwater is going to be, you know, going back into, you know, a relatively wet area to begin with, how does my property become impacted?
All right, I would, if you don't. All right, I would, if you don't mind, I'll allow the applicant to reply to that.
Yep, certainly, so, you know, as, as a development, we're required to meet the stormwater regulations, uh, the town has stormwater regulations, TEP has stormwater regulations. As a three-lot subdivision, if you will, we're not required to meet all of the provisions of the Massey EP stormwater regs, um, so it's maximum extent practicable. This particular development, um, because of the amount of, I guess, call it gravel out here, there's really not much runoff leaving this property at all. And everything is graded to go back in the east-to-lee direction to this wetland, which is a substantial wetland, um, in town, you know, there's going to be next to no impacts that I think any neighbors are going to see as a result of it, where our total development grade, we're up at elevation, I think, 365, um, we're at least 10, 12-plus feet above the groundwater table that's out there now. So, everything out there is super high, and we're limited as to how much, you know, how low we can go, the amount of gravel that can be removed here, the development area. So, you know, I don't, I don't really see how this is going to affect anybody, especially the, all the directed butters that are around this developed area. Trying to see if I have any, I don't have the full stormwater report with me here, um, but the...
Do you need a copy of those?
No, I, I have the table I was looking for here. So, for, for our development, both point of analysis, one, I believe is down here, up toward Arbor Street in the rear of the site, is point of analysis two, um, the total peak flows are not exceeded at all, so we're mitigating to less going back to the wetland. Um, and then coming up to the front, again, this is, this is areas just here in the front that's being 100% contained on the property, none of this discharges to the neighbors' properties. If anything, the road and lots are lower than the site, but they've never seen runoff come from this, so there's a slight increase in peak runoff by, um, about point eight, 0.8 CFS, uh, in the 50-year storm, and, um, about 2 CFS in the 100-year storm, but it all is contained entirely on-site, so.
Does it contradict your prior comment about the water running off to the back though?
It flows in that direction to the back.
Water has to go somewhere, as we mentioned before, it finds its level. If I have usable...
Oh, I'm, I am going to apologize, I am going to interrupt you, I'll ask you to start again at the microphone, just because there are viewers, and this is being recorded, so I want to make sure that the whole conversation's...
Sure, uh, I guess my question is, doesn't that contradict your prior comment that the water would be running off to the back, to that known wetlands area, that, I understand that the proposed development is similar topography level to the wetlands, so the higher housing on that road wouldn't be impacted, but I have usable land that is lower than the actual houses on that road, that's currently used for farming use and horses, so how is raising the water that's going to that wetland that would then be coming onto my property going to be dealt with? Because it just, the, the prior comments contradicts the, the prior statements contradict the comment that was made at the end of his first statement.
Okay.
So, the, the, the direction of flow is back toward the wetland, the stormwater, stormwater features that we're proposing are mitigating that flow.
But that's not what you said before, before you said it would be...
Again, I apologize, I do need...
The, the direction the stormwater is flowing is to the back, our stormwater controls are mitigating the flows, so it's not adding extra volume and sending more peak flows to the wetland now than it was before.
But is this...
Yeah.
Under normal circumstances, I would understand that and agree with it, and forgive my ignorance, but knowing that this is a former gravel pit, the water levels are already significantly very high, there's not a lot for that water to go down there, you've already dug 40 feet down with this gravel pit, there's, there's nowhere else for the water to go but back.
So, it's not a formal gravel pit, there's a section of the middle of this site that gravel was extracted 50 years ago. You don't agree with that? It's, it's right here, it's plain say, right here in the middle of the site.
As someone who's walked that whole area, trail ridden their horses through it, the entire thing was a gravel pit, they've taken a number of material out of there, the whole thing is a gravel pit, or was.
Regardless of what it was, our final development here is going to be 10 feet above the wetland level, 10 feet above the high groundwater that's out there. So, it's going to have no impact on the high groundwater.
So, I want to make sure I understand. So, what I'm hearing is that, I mean, while, while any development changes runoff and infiltration, that, I mean, that, that's because you're changing what's on top of the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Things are going to change, that, well, I guess I'll ask, what will the difference be in the volume of water moving back towards the wetlands compared to now?
So, I don't have the volume calculations, I have the peak flow calculations.
That, that's what I meant.
The volume is not required to be mitigated per your regulations or the state regulations.
Thank you, uh, thank you for correcting me.
Yep, and as I, I just did say, the peak flows, um, at point of analysis, do you have the full report that has the plan? So, so, point of analysis two is up in the front of the site, so I had them reversed. Point of analysis two, there's zero increase in peak flow.
Okay.
Point of analysis one, which is back here, which is the big wetland in the back of the site, for the 50-year storm event, it's point, 0.89 CFS, and then for the 100-year storm event, it would be, uh, 2.15 CFS increase. And that's an increase in peak flow, it would be an increase in peak volume, um, but volumes were not required to mitigate and account for in Mass and, or Lunenburg. In this, it's, it's essentially two residential lots that are flowing in that back direction. It's a gigantic wetland system, so any increase in peak flow, which is going to happen, is distributed over that entire wetland series, which I don't have the calculations or the numbers, but, you know, it's on the order of probably 50 to 100-plus acres in the back here. So, the increase from a couple of residential lots is significantly different than a, a commercial development or big driveway areas or pavement areas and things like that, you know, which is, is minuscule and negligible. For something this size, I wouldn't expect any notice in increase or changes as a result of this development.
All right, um, and in addition, what I would also say is this will go, are, are you familiar with the idea of where we have peer review by another engineer? Okay, that was a nod, yes, just because I don't know what doesn't, doesn't, doesn't get captured by the cameras. So, this will go to our peer review as well, and they will be verifying all of this information, so that, um, again, if there is an error somewhere, the idea is that we catch it. I don't know how well this answers your, your question, um, if you have another concern, you can let us know, we can see what we can do as well.
I guess my question?
Yep, no worries, you are far from the only person who needs that reminder.
Uh, my question would be, would the peer reviewing engineer be going out to see the site and see the amount of material that has been taken out as it was a former gravel pit, versus just looking at the plans that the proposal has?
They'd do a site visit with every application.
Okay.
I can also mention that...
What's the address of the property you're concerned about?
201 Arbor.
I'd also like to mention that, uh, I believe the peer review has already been to the site previously when they submitted the subdivision plan, so that my understanding is that he is fairly familiar with this site. Um, and also I would like to make, I don't think we've made the motion for the peer review yet, have we?
Not yet.
So, I would move that we get a peer review not to exceed $3,000, is that how you want it?
From Graves Engineering, not to exceed $3,000 for the stormwater and common driveway applications.
The 171 Arbor Street, I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, so there definitely will be peer review.
Mr. Chair, may I provide?
Please.
A little...
I love being interrupted by experts, that, that makes my job better.
Now that the pressure's on, um, I would say with the turnouts, both of the ones that you suggested, I would put those in the plans.
Okay.
I'm pretty positive that, I, I can't, you know, predict the future, but I'm pretty positive, both fire department and the peer reviewers say...
Yeah.
We'd like a turnout at the bottom of the fork, and then at least a one-car turnout up above, because there's more than public safety that might utilize that.
Yep, that's right.
Trucks, box trucks, and delivery trucks and other things, so that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, it's easy. Great, all right, and the applicant has your addresses well and is aware of your concerns, so hopefully, um, as the plan moves forward and as peer review happens, we'll have some great answers here. Don't hesitate to reach out if you have further concerns, um, and... Do we need, is there anything else, we, any other questions or anything else we need to talk about tonight on this?
This would be the sixth peer review that we haven't gotten back, so would you be willing to go to the 27th, or would you want a 13th, or...
I'd keep the 13th, I talked to Jeff already, so I would keep the 13th.
Very good.
And if they can't meet it, we continue.
Okay, sounds good, so there could be a motion to continue the public hearing to, for 171 Arbor Street, to January 13th at 6:05 PM.
Someone.
Give me your email, when I get the peer review report, I can send it to you.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Bang-a-rang, all right, great, thank you. If you, if, if you want to give them your email now, that's cool, just so that way you don't have to hang out till after the meeting or something, come on up, that's not, or write it down or whatever, yeah. Friends, that, those are our public hearings tonight. Moving on to decisions, we have one, the edited one for 1260 Reservoir Road. I'm assuming that's how they say it in France, I, I don't speak French.
Mr. Chair, this one is fairly simple, but fairly tortured as well, I think it, all the formatting is good, it is a bear working with the software platform we have, but that includes everything, and I added the standard condition on the hours of construction. I caught a few small grammatical errors, um, so it's a clean version as far as I know, and, um, good for signing.
All right, and we have a copy of this in the staff report as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I did make a couple of small adjustments, grammatical things I noted, like the date and...
Yeah.
I don't even know whether it was the same version, but, we're just having some troubles with our platform, but nonetheless, that one, before I printed it, was, was clean, so I think you're good to go.
The paper copy to be signed is, um, also in that, that giant binder over there.
Do you need that?
No. Well, I mean, maybe once it's time, but I'll just be passing it back to you.
Oh, the copy we're going to sign is in that binder, you said?
Um, yeah, I have it like printed independently of the...
Oh, no, it's fine, I, I was just...
I would use that one, because I did catch...
Okay.
Things that I don't, that today.
Okay.
That, um, so I think you can go ahead and sign that one, it's, looks pretty clean.
Okay, we've seen the copy in here, this has a couple more minor changes, if people want to review this document physically, I'm fine with passing it down. Before we do our, I have not signed yet, but actually, I, I guess I can sign since I'm comfy with it, and then people can review, I don't think we have to pass twice, my point.
Okay, you want to?
Sure.
Yeah, the major thing was, if you recall, the standard conditions and hours of construction were left out, that was a primary thing, and a few grammatical, getting names right and so forth, um, which is just formatting and the template, but, um, the main thing, standard conditions, including the hours of construction, and that's been added. Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, Saturdays, 8 to 12, no holidays, no Sunday. Oh boy. Is no one else in Zoom, now I'm sad.
Nothing particularly super, I mean, the, really, the, the opposite of important business, but while we're having people just review and then sign if they're happy, um, we have good viewership numbers these days, congratulations, we're TV and internet stars. We're influen... Wait, wait, you know what, it's sharing on YouTube, that makes us influencers.
Oh, no, thank you.
Oh, it's too late.
No, I'm all set.
No, it's too late, we're influencers.
Nope.
Usually when you're an influencer from a public board, it's for the wrong reason. So, be happy that you're rock stars.
Um, oh, and I, I was, I was stopped in the grocery store the other day and thanked for our work that we've been doing.
Wow.
So, there we go. My point being that we're here for lots of hours, but people appreciate it.
I'm doing. Doing a great job, seeing a lot of planning boards.
Fair. You know, that has been my whole time on the board, and I assume it goes back before then, that has been the routine feedback that we have received, is, uh, because that's what, I mean, even Bright Farms said, when they were, they were like, yeah, you, they're like, y'all know your stuff.
We bent over backwards for Bright Farms.
We bent over backwards with effort, but not with, we weren't making these outrageous accommodations, and we even held their engineers to some tight standards, so.
No, but it was a great example of the way all the town boards and groups came together to expedite this project that was beneficial for the town, so, I mean, it wasn't just the planning board.
No.
It's all the groups in town got together to expedite that.
You guys are knowledgeable, concise, and you take care of your business well. I had a, no names will be mentioned, but I had a board with four PhDs on it, oh my God, you guys are light years better than...
Don't worry, we're poorly educated, so we'll be fine. Um, no, so, that was, okay, board discussions, 512 Northfield Road, uh, stormwater management permit, release of performance guarantee, and this was us making sure that vegetation survived, correct?
Correct, Mr. Chair, through you, the board, uh, it was a six-month requirement for survival, for the vegetation that was required, which is a bunch of trees. So, I've checked the site out, and everything is there, nothing's dead, nothing looks like it was removed, uh, so I'd recommend release of the full bond to $6,000 for that purpose.
Do we have any questions?
This is the one next to the Ball Field that was mentioned earlier in the public hearing?
Uh, no.
No?
I don't think, yes, he was telling you.
No, no, uh, he was mentioning Ball Field on Reservoir Road.
680 Northfield.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. No, yeah, this one's Northfield, 512 Northfield.
But they did a really nice job, if I may say, on the, um, the actual work on the peystone on the side of the drive, the whole design, so, well done.
Great, with no questions, I would look for a motion to release the performance guarantee for 512 Northfield Road.
For the amount of $6,000.
And the amount, oh, go ahead.
I do have a question.
Please.
So, before we had the Land Use Director refilled, didn't we also have a recommendation from Graves on this? Or did... Or did they actually do the, do the site visit? Or was it just, was it you, Chris?
It was just me. Yeah, I wouldn't say only a peer reviewer. You can do post permitting construction review.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's within your authority, but if that's a practice you'd like, we can do that. But this, this seemed like a pretty clear instance of the land use director checking it and making sure it's verified and then giving a recommendation that the board can rely on. But you can add additional if you had some questions or you saw something different in your own sidewalk. That's perfectly appropriate.
I think that we've typically done that, but I mean, I'm reluctant to alleviate any stringency on our stormwater permits. Just my personal.
I don't know if we've always done it, had Graves come out for this part of it. I know it was, and it might have been on this one in particular. I don't remember. I know that, I think it was Northfield, we had, I know that we had some where he came out and saw because there was some.
Northfield and Howard.
Yeah. With the, some issues with the plantings and everything else.
Survivability is something that's pretty easy to determine, but
Sure.
if it was a stormwater structure and whether it was operating properly six months down the road or, you know, installed properly or maintained properly, I would agree with you, an engineer might be necessary to evaluate that. But survivability is something that's easy to determine.
And this, and come to think of it, they weren't coming out for the six-month survivability. It was for checking the, I think it was checking the aspels
Okay.
on the stormwater and everything, and then looking and saying, hey, there aren't some of the right plantings or something. Now, I don't remember if it was this one or a, or a different property, but it was at least on Northfield, if memory serves. While we're looking at as plantings, I am personally comfortable with Chris looking at it and saying that's a plant that's alive.
Still alive, yeah. Pretty easy call, I suppose.
And the right size. People counter-intuitively think, and this is something you'll hear me recommend, they want bigger trees. You know, the bigger, the better. The bigger impact, the better. But those don't survive as well as smaller trees, believe it or not. Usually the 68-foot, one and a half inch to two-inch caliber is the optimal tree that will grow faster than a larger tree over time and survive better.
Neat. All right, so we could have a motion to release the performance guarantee for the stormwater management permit for 512 Northfield Road to the sum of $6,000.
By the way, if I may, if down the road the trees die, they still have to replant them. This is a special permit and it's a requirement of a special permit for the approval.
And that's why we.
Those compliance and, you know, as far as the.
And that's why we put in some of those other requirements about people actually having to monitor and follow. I think we could still use a so moved if people want to.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Love it. Master Plan Steering Committee composition. I put this on, in for discussion. I don't know how productive the discussion can be without Mr. Wilsner here, who could speak more to what's going on day to day and as the committee's functioning. I can give us a broad overview. And I mean, the broad overview is we're hitting the point many communities hit in the master planning process. We're this late in the game. It's much harder to get quorum of your master, of the master plan steering committee. And that likely is, I'm assuming that is impacted because we have a large master plan steering committee. But, I mean, this happens with smaller ones too, at this point. And I know that that committee has struggled to have quorum since last spring. They took the summer off to regroup. But also with Ms. Gilchrist stepping back as no longer serving on the committee or being its chair. Tim has taken that role as the vice chair, but it's been, they have not been able to get quorum. And I think that is, I would rather hear Tim's thoughts personally before we commit to changing the makeup of the committee because I don't know that he thinks that that's necessary. But I kind of wanted to put it on our radar. I mean, there were some frustrated email chains the other week about meetings and everything else. I don't know how much of the board was or wasn't on those. But just putting it on our radar. I am happy to have more discussion about it now. I'm happy for us to be aware of this challenge. And then when Tim is with us at our January 13th meeting to discuss it and maybe come up with a plan then. I know that there are probably some roles we, on there, we need to appoint, but we need people volunteering to appoint those roles.
So that, that committee is, is what, it's an eight-member quorum?
Yes.
And that's because of this 15 members?
Yep.
So I mean, my recommendation would be that we take, do a review of the people who have missed the most meetings, take their position and make it advisory or, or not ad hoc, but what is?
Liaison.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, a member but not a voting member.
I thi-, this often liaison role? I don't know. That's what it's referred to on the Economic Development Committee when I was there. But I think there's another term. I don't know, a member of, I know what you mean.
Okay, so I mean, quorum is made up of voting members. So if we just reduce the number of voting members, we don't have to change the membership per se. And we would effectively reduce the quorum requirement. Now, I'm assuming you've got at least five people that almost always show up. If you could get it down to a quorum of five, that would probably work.
Let's see, some emphatic nodding from Ms. Reed.
Yes, I think that's, I was thinking about how this late in the game, if it would make sense to reduce the amount and reorganize. Again, Mr. Wilsner is not here, so I'd like to hear his thoughts. But my husband is a member at large on the master plan steering committee, and he is frustrated. Again, we don't talk specifics. We just talk about procedural things, which we've learned this year. We can talk about procedural things and not be in violation of open meaning law. So mostly scheduling, and the scheduling has been abysmal. And people are not getting along. As you, you mentioned, there was an email thread that he was on. And I just think it's kind of, you know, how are you supposed to do things if people don't show up? And there's quite a few who, who don't show up. And, and you know, speaking on Ms. Gilchrist leaving, I'm not even sure if most people were happy to go to meetings even with her as the chair. So it's, it's kind of like that. I don't know what everybody's thoughts are who are on the committee, what their ideas are, what they thought this process was going to be. But I just think there's a lot of not-so-happy people. And I don't know if the communication is there for not only the members but also the public. I think the public meeting that just happened was pretty abysmal. I don't have Facebook on my phone, but I downloaded Facebook to see if there was any posting about the meeting on any of the Facebook groups or from Ludenberg. There was not. So I'm not sure how people knew to attend a meeting when it wasn't posted on social media because we know as a town, we only post stuff on social media. Yes, it was on the town website, I believe. I'm on a board and I go to the town website maybe twice a year. So it, you know, we have these things in town, like signs out front of the Ritter Building and we put up signs for town meeting, but we don't implement any of that for, for this, this group, this committee. So it's, I, it's kind of frustrating as a, as a planning board member and also as the wife of somebody who's on the committee who's like, I don't know what's going on any day. So those are just my thoughts, but I appreciate what, what Mr. Allison said because it would make sense to reduce it in a way to where there are less voting members. I, I'm hoping there's a way to figure out who comes to meetings and who doesn't, but I don't, you know, they haven't had meetings since spring, so it's kind of hard to figure out who has been and who hasn't been and who's going and who's not going. But I, that, that might be something to look into for sure.
There was, I, I don't need the answer today, but there was a request to me from one member of the committee saying, can the planning board, rather than the committee having to meet and vote for their chair and everything, can the planning board assign those roles? I have no idea how that works. I don't know that that's necessary if we make other changes. But that was a request that came to me from one member of the committee.
What was the, the ad hoc or, how was it formed? There's usually a something, an assigning committee, must have been the planning board?
Yes.
And so there was a charter or some kind of thing?
We created the.
I haven't seen it.
We created the charge for it, yes.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but
Okay.
you could just vote to change that.
Okay.
And then your charter.
I've never heard of, of, of a creating committee advising the, the hierarchy, the makeup of, you know, chair, vice chair.
Yep.
That doesn't, I've never heard of that.
I, I don't know that it's necessary, but it was brought up. I wanted to put it forward at least. But I think on the 13th, we'll come in with some more info. Tim will have some more info and hopefully we'll be able to, Mr. Allison, I really like your pla-, I like your idea there because I don't.
It's a great idea.
I don't want to lose the opportunity for the different constituency groups to have their voice heard. But I do also think it is important that if the representatives of those groups are not regularly attending meetings, then it just may be the case that we are not able to count them towards quorum. And the unfortunate side effect of that is we have to remove their vote. And that's not a punishment, that's just a move the process forward. Okay, I, I think we have enough of a plan in place to move forward with this for the 13th. Makes sense. I'm going to move us on unless there's any big concern. Okay? Abutting community notices. Anything we need to know about?
Um, let's see here. One moment. There was one notice of decision from Townsend's planning board. If I can go over here. Yep. So there was a notice of decision from Townsend's planning board granting a stormwater management permit for a Starbucks. I think I mentioned that the last meeting. And then there was a big bulk one from Fitchburg's planning board. They're having a public hearing on December 17th, and that will cover a marijuana shop, a conversion from an office to a two-family residential in addition to a site with three duplexes, and it'll come out to 10 total units. And then a conversion from a four-family to a three-family.
Well, that's going to affect Ludenberg.
No. How does Townsend have the retail volume, like, like the retail capital expen-, the, the, the retail money expenditure to support multiple chain eateries? I find that fascinating.
Major routes, we have none.
It's all about traffic counts.
It's all about traffic.
What, what's the major, I'm like, I know when I drive in Townsend, but I don't know if they count as major routes otherwise. But they've got, I mean, we have dunks too. We have two dunks. We're fancy.
National chains like at Demographics.
Yeah.
They look at traffic counts.
Yeah.
Apparently it meets their threshold.
I was just wondering what that is. This isn't saying I desperately want to love chains in Ludenberg. It's just, it's interesting because I always think of Townsend as even more rural than us. They have a McDonald's. And now they're getting a Starbucks.
That's the worst McDonald's then.
Oh, it's the worst McDonald's?
It's the worst one. It's real bad.
I'm going to have to go there.
Yeah.
I might have argued with you about that, but then I realized the McDonald's I was thinking of closed several years ago. Probably because it possibly could have won previously. So there we go.
I think we had Walmart when it first, oh, I think there was a McDonald's and Walmart when it first opened.
Oh, yeah, there was. Yeah, I remember marveling at that when we went there to get my TI-85 graphing calculator. Isn't it amazing those still cost the same amount, like?
Yeah, but what did you get at McDonald's?
Oh, I don't.
That's all we really care about.
I was with my father. We didn't get to spend money at McDonald's. Come on.
Is that when you upgraded from the little professor?
We had one of those too. We were dropping $100 on a calculator on the salary of a public high school teacher in the worst-paid district in the state. And my dad was the, was a land, was the land manager for Mass Department of Fish and Game. So you know.
Do you still have that calculator?
Yes, I do.
Well, that.
Yes, I do, I do. And it still has a whole bar of pixels that don't work in the middle of the screen, actually. You'd think I'd get rid of it, but. Committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee, we kind of handled that. Open Space Committee.
I got nothing.
Municipal Building Design Committee.
They did meet last Monday. However, I was not able to make the meeting. My understanding is they had a discussion with the, with the new people about space needs.
Okay. Great. Capital Planning Committee. The, the action of the Municipal Building Design Committee just interestingly has impacted some of the Capital Planning Committee discussions. Just about how much should Ritter get fixes that could then be completely undone by the, by the plans of the Municipal Building Design Committee? Nothing huge, but.
If there's asbestos removal, nothing's wasted.
Good to, it wasn't asbestos. One of them might have been asbestos, but we couldn't afford that anyway right now on that, on this year's capital planning budget. Capital Planning Committee keeps chugging along, and we're going to be on time with the recommendations to the town manager, interim town manager, and then we're going to keep going in January to then work on the actual five-year capital plan for the town. So we can be more than the Capital Ranking Committee. Economic Development Committee.
Nothing to report there. I think our next meeting is scheduled for the 19th.
Cool. Stormwater Task Force. We do not have a representative here. Monticic Regional Planning Commission.
They met on December 5th. I was unable to attend.
All right. Monticic Joint Transportation Committee.
We meet on Wednesday this week.
All right. Town Manager Screening Committee. We have interviews coming up shortly. And we will, I mean, we have received resumes. We have determined from those who was appropriate to interview. We will be conducting those interviews shortly and then making our recommendation. The candidates, basically, we pa-, I say recommendation, we will be choosing the candidates to pass along to the Select Board. And then the Select Board will interview and work with those candidates and make a decision. I feel good about our prospects. All right. Meeting schedule. The planning board meets at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, unless otherwise stated. Upcoming meetings include.
Typo on the first one.
Yep, I was going to say. I keep wanting to say November instead of January for completely unclear reasons. But January 13th. unclear reasons, but January 13th, January 27th, and February 10th. We are not meeting on September, December 23rd. All right. Public comment. No one in Zoom, no one in the room, if the ghost of planning board members passed, wish to speak, this would be your time. Hearing none? Board comment or concerns?
I have one thing I'd like to mention. Coming in tonight, this is the first rain, considerable rain we've had in a good amount of time, and also since that development on Mass Ave between West Thompson Harbor Road and Jackson. There was a considerable puddle in 2A, it's a state road, it's really not the town's issue, per se, but I don't know if somebody wants to take a look, if somebody can talk to the building inspector or DPW, but there was a large puddle and it's a state road.
Which one is this? I'm sorry?
It's between Jackson, West Thompson Harbor Road.
Okay.
The one that goes to Hickory Hills.
Yep.
I can, I can take a look at that with the building.
I've seen it pond there before, but with much larger rain, I mean, much, much heavier than a greater storm event. So, I don't know if it's maybe a plugged-up catch basin or what, but.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like that or, or something.
Could be, it was that.
Humiliative, yeah. We'll take a look at it tomorrow.
I mean, cause that's also where they just did the water replacement, the water main replacement, and again, this is the first sizable rain we've had.
It's gonna be raining the next two days, the puddle's gonna get bigger.
It's gonna get worse, right?
We'll take a look at it.
Very good, I just wanted to mention, thank you.
Good, thank you. Any other board comments or concerns?
I did enjoy the land use director introducing himself among the other new employees at the selectman's meeting.
Oh, thank you.
I thought that was a good touch, and I, and I did like the idea of you, you being there and speaking about some of the issues coming up, you know, specifically the MBTA Communities Act and the ADU, and all these regulations that the, you know, the state is, you know, mandating that we deal with, so I, I thought that was some, some good publicity and got, it got it on people's mind, and the more we can do that specifically, even if it's just a couple-of-minute blurb at the selectman's meeting, I think goes a long way to, you know, generate, we need to generate more views of our site, you know, of our meetings, so that these, the citizens, you know, aren't learning of all these, these, you know, state mandates at town meeting floor. So, I, I really enjoyed that, you know, if, if I wasn't as, you know, involved in this board, I would have found that, you know, your presentation, your brief, brief little presentation enlightening, and would have, you know, caused me to inquire, maybe look into a few things, I thought that was a very, very helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, and anytime you have a concern or any topic that you want me to represent for the selectman, I will get on their agenda and do the same. I should mention out of that, you know, I was there quickly, if I may, Mr. Chair.
No, please, please, no, yes.
Cause I, you remember I said, I'll shut up now.
Yeah.
But, try to keep it concise. We got 20,000, or we have requested $20,000 we'll know we'll get for MRPC to be the consultant to help you with the MBTA zoning, to give you district options, to go through the compliance model, generate the engagement, public engagement, and the language itself, the text language itself, so we have that resource, it doesn't bind you to do anything, and that's an important thing to note, that all it is, is sort of advisory consultant guidance.
Yeah.
And obviously, we know what the state's intent is.
Right.
They're putting money to help towns come into compliance, but it, it does not bind you to do that.
And that's one of the things I find frustrating, is that, you know, on certain issues like that, the state, the, you know, our, our money, our, our state tax funds flow freely, yet in other issues, you know, on, on issues that are important to them, but issues that are important to us and all the regulations that we try to deal with here in town with lacking funding, they're not, the cash is not so free-flowing.
Yeah.
It's just frustrating. I mean, I appreciate the $20,000, but, you know, we could use $20,000 in a lot of areas.
It's a carrot-and-stick approach is more prominent now than it.
Particularly stick.
Yeah, yeah, but, so, we'll have to work with that, but, you're right.
Great. Anything else?
I have one more thing, actually, I wanna go back to the flood maps. At the beginning of the meeting, what I heard was that Lunenburg flood maps are being updated, is, was that not what was said?
Lunenburg floodplain maps.
Floodplain maps.
And the DCR is, is handling that.
Now, my understanding was that those were driven by the firm maps.
I actually, I wanted to get the facts straight on that, so I happened to pop this up, and go to the source, and a floodplain map is a general map showing areas prone to flooding, mostly usually through a zoning district, while a firm map, flood insurance rate map, is a specific map created by FEMA that identifies flood risk zones as used primarily for determining flood insurance rates within a community. So, distinction with the difference, but they are similar, but, but somewhat different things, different purpose.
Right, I, I didn't, I guess I didn't understand that DCI had their own input.
I didn't understand that either.
It makes no sense to me, I mean, cause.
Yeah, yeah, this is, it's new.
All right.
Yeah.
Massachusetts, waste our money.
Well, what, what is that? It's another sort of state effort to regulate local land use.
Basically, yeah, well, I mean, the farm maps were that too, but.
Yeah.
It was a national thing, so.
Right. But if you could, you know, afford the insurance, then, you know, you could, you could nonetheless build what you want.
Yeah, but there's no grandfathering out of that. Once they changed the location of the line and your house falls within it, then you're screwed, because you gotta pay the extra flood insurance.
If, if you can get it.
If you can get it, right.
That's true, it's true, so, serious implications, for sure.
Exactly, I mean, it was a nightmare.
I don't wanna get anyone riled up, but it's, yeah, it is a controversial thing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'll, I'll look into it myself.
Great. Anything else? If there's no other board comment or concerns, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, planning board, thank you, friends in Lunenburg, for joining us. Keep your eyes out, we'll have more info outcome, more info outgoing and all sorts of things, and we'll see you in the new year. Take care, everybody.